I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's town board meeting, September 15th, 2025. We're going to be doing today's town board meeting in memory of former chief Ken Richter, who was an active member of North Bailey's Fire Company for the past 45 years. And before joining North Bailey in 1979, Kent was an active firefighter for five years, stints at both Snyder and the Williamsville Fire Department. He is also a U.S. Army Reserve veteran and worked in the Towns Highway Department for 40 years. So we want to thank Mr. Richter for his incredible service to our community and country, and send our thoughts and prayers to his family and friends and all that served alongside him. With that being said, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, with that, I'm going to ask the town clerk for a roll call.
Deputy Supervisor Lavin. Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Councilmember Zuccala.
Here.
And Councilmember Marinucci.
Present.
Okay. We are going to make a, for the next one, we have the minutes approval from our meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and make a motion to approve those minutes as they appear.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Today's also, we're going to make a proclamation and recognition of Michael Sisnowski, who worked in our Building Maintenance Department for 25 and a half years. It's incredible. We thank him for his service to our community and all of his steadfast commitment to Amherst. The next section of our agenda will be a public hearing. Public hearings, a public hearing for Resolution 2025-776, the adoption of a local law amending Chapter 4 of the Town of Amherst administration government.
I'd like to make an, I would like to make an announcement in that we're withdrawing since so many people are here for the Millersport rezoning. We've been asked to withdraw that tonight by the developer. I mean, table it tonight. So you want to make the motion?
So I have, so right now, there's a motion in front of us for Motion 2025-776. That is true. We will not be voting on Miller Support this evening, but the motion in front of us is in regards to the adoption of a local law amending Chapter 4, and I so move.
Second.
All in favor of the resolution for the 2025-776? Open to the public hearing, correct?
We all.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, is, where's Bob?
Bob.
He was here two seconds.
Bob?
Bob.
Bob McCarthy will present, Bob McCarthy, Director of Human Resources for Amherst, presenting the local law amendment.
Good evening. So this, this is an amendment to local law. Chapter 83, excuse me, of the current local law grants the authority to the Building Department to oversee facilities and those types of functions. This law is going to be amended to actually create a separate department that will be known as the Facilities Department to carry out those functions. The, the current code with it ascribing all the authority to the Building Department is fine as far as it goes, but the Building Department's main function is really code enforcement. It's not the day-to-day operations of buildings.
Can you talk?
Oh, sorry. So the goal here is to sort of streamline things and give that authority to one central department that will have oversight and will cooperate with all the departments on making, you know, major decisions. One of the main facets will be to coordinate capital projects and capital budgets so that there's an economy of scale. So if one, if one department is replacing windows or roofing, we know that other, other departments are doing that as well, and they can buy together, they can bid together, and there could be savings in doing so. The Facilities Department is well-equipped to make sure everything's up to code. They have experts in the department. They have architects, people that can assist in planning, repairing, making sure the buildings are safe and fully operational. And that's largely the goal of this, of this department becoming a standalone. Again, this should help with budgeting by streamlining the process. Everybody should be on the same page. One thing to be clear, and it's one of the things that was raised in, in the, you know, the drafting of the local law, is the departments that operate the facilities still play a major role and are actually responsible for operating the facilities and carrying out those functions. The Facilities Department does not have people that, right as it stands today, that are familiar with the operation of a four-sheet ice rink or a wastewater treatment plant. We understand that, and that's why reliance still lies with the departments to carry out those functions, to do the day-to-day operations. Facilities, the new Facilities Department will be there to help and assist in efficient, streamlined operations. And again, the economy of scales that can only be realized by combining the greater assets of the town under one umbrella that can be managed and overseen in that manner. And that's, that's the major goal, certainly not to usurp authority or operational responsibility from any of the existing departments that oversee whatever, you know, the matter might As far as the capital budgeting and looking at those projects go, again, it's, it's an economy of scale. It's a streamlined process where there's cooperation, there's coordination, there's oversight between the Departments and the Facilities Department, but it's, it's one-stop shopping. It's all coming out of the same place. It's going to enhance, you know, over the years, sometimes communications are not at an optimum when you have a town the size of ours with departments strewn over 55 square miles that aren't always in, aren't always very proximate to one another. So again, this is just a step that probably should have been addressed many, many years ago, where we're actually going to have a function for oversight and input and implementation, but not usurpation of any of the authority or operational responsibilities of the departments that are actually running the facilities. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Bob. So I'm going to open up any questions to this board first, who have any questions for Mr. McCarthy about this new local law amendment.
Bob, can you clarify how this will impact current employees?
Sure. So there is no intention at this point in time or in the future that was discussed to move employees from one department to another, to take employees out of, say, you know, the wastewater treatment plant or the North Town Center and assign them to the Facilities Department. They'll all work together. They're all town resources, just like the buildings and the facilities are all town resources, the employees are all town resources as well. So there, if, if the North Town Center has, you know, 10 maintenance workers and five crew chiefs and three cleaners, they'll continue to have the exact same complement of staff that they currently have. That's, that is not one of the moves that are afoot, is to move people around. Again, the operational needs of the department will always come first because we have a responsibility to open the doors and provide the services that we provide to all of our residents. We'll never lose sight of that, and this certainly will not lose sight of that. It's, again, just a situation where we want to enhance what we have and, and bring everybody together to cooperate, coordinate things in a more efficient manner.
Any other questions from this board?
Just quickly, Bob. So as I understand it, this is currently a unit within the Building Department, and so we're codifying the existence of this unit as its own separate department. How many jobs will this law create?
Will it create? So there won't be a significant change in the number of jobs. One of the goals in the Facilities Department is to actually, and they've already begun the process, of developing and implementing a skilled trades group. So we have brought in some people and still intend to bring in some people with those types of skills, carpentry, plumbing, electrical. Already, there's been some work done where we've saved considerable amounts of money by not having to go to outside contractors, by bringing those talents in-house and utilizing them. And that is something that we would hope to expand for even greater savings moving forward. And again, all of our employees are, they're shared resources. So if we've got, you know, a master plumber in, in facilities that can help some of the plumbers that might already be assigned to the, to plant or to the, some other location in the town, it's all about support and cooperation and helping each other. We all have a common goal, that's to operate the town as efficiently and as cost-effectively as is possible.
But there are no new jobs being created right now? It would just be reorganizing the unit as its own department?
Yeah, and no new jobs that have really come out of this amendment to the local law.
Right.
Just the normal course of replacing, you know, retirees and seeing a need for, for positions that, again, were already, you know, being examined prior to any of these discussions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other additional questions from this board? Okay. I'm going to open it up to any.
I just want to note, and I apologize, I caught this last Friday, in Section 1 titled, title, "This Local Law Shall Be Referred To As Quotation of Local Law Amending Chapter 4 of the Code of," it's got a capital O instead of a small o for the "of," and to make sure it's correct. I apologize if we didn't catch it in the drafting stage, but I would ask if you're going to vote in favor of this, that that should be part of, it's a Scrivener's error.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. All right. I'm going to open it up to anybody in the chambers who has any questions regarding this public hearing. If you have any questions, please stand up.
Where is the department head going to come from for this new department? Is this going to be a promotion for an employee from within if there's no new jobs being And I'm not sure where this falls in relation to what we have as the Building Maintenance Department right now. Is that separate from what the Facilities Department would be? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. Only in this town with this board could you create a new department of jobs that already exist and are already being done and call it an efficiency move. You know, that just boggles my mind. You know, the work's being done. I mean, Mr. McCarthy said the work's being done now. It's being done by the people in the Building Department. And now we're going to take it off, spin it off as a new department, which will require a department head, whether they come from inside, and then that person will have to be replaced, be replaced over in building. There'll have to be a clerical staff developed, and before long, you'll have a staff of about 10 people sitting around waiting to decide which walls need to be painted. You know, this town has existed without this department since it's been here, and now all of a sudden, we have to have a new department to do something the town's been doing forever? Mr. McCarthy said, "Well, we'll have a plumber, and he can go over and help out the master plumbers in the other departments." Well, if you need a plumber now, get one of the master plumbers in one of the other departments, have them come over to do it. If you want to share services, I mean, don't talk about economies of scale and anything like that. You don't get economies of scale by getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You get economies of scale by finding ways to do things better with what you have. This is just another, let's create a few jobs thing, and that's all it is.
John Traybitt, Mount Vernon Road. Tonight, under Resolution 776, you are considering the creation of a brand-new Facilities Department through an amendment to Chapter 4 of the Town Code. This administration has had eight years to bring forward a proposal like this, so one must ask, why now? Why the urgency and immediacy just weeks before an election day? Amherst taxpayers deserve to know if this is truly about better government and efficiency or if it is about creating and maintaining patronage jobs. Is it true that some of the employees that would be filling positions in this new department are currently exempt, and several of these people were hired for Amherst Central Park? The resolution before you tonight gives sweeping authority to a new department over construction, maintenance, staffing, purchasing, and budgeting of all town-owned and leased facilities. It even creates a Director of Facilities with broad hiring powers. Whenever a town board moves this quickly, especially so close to an election, taxpayers should be asking, what's the rush? If this is truly about efficiency and savings, then it can wait until after the voters have their say. If not, then residents are right to question whether this is about political favors being locked in before November. This board should impose a moratorium on creating this department until at least after the election and ideally into the new year. They should also call for a hiring freeze to ensure that no new taxpayer-funded positions are filled before voters decide the future direction of this town. Good government requires transparency and accountability. It does not mean blindsiding residents with major structural changes to town government weeks before an election. The people of Amherst deserve the right to decide the future of their government. They do not deserve last-minute actions taken in haste that could ultimately cost them more money. To put it simply, this resolution looks like a way to ensure that patronage hires from the past will remain on the payroll just in case there are major changes come election time. Thank you.
I like to go back and look at history and see how creating new departments might be successful. Let's take a look back at the Economic Development Department that was created in 2020. The Town Code requires them to post a yearly report on their progress. The first report was generated a couple of years after they were in business, and that was done by an outside consultant that was hired for $83,000, which was taken from another account. That really said nothing about any type of jobs they created, and instead, they spent five pages just explaining to Amherst where they're located within New York State. Since that time, they've only generated one report in the last five years. During that time, they spent about $1.5 million on salaries there, and they really have done nothing. If the new department is going to follow in the history of this, they're going to sit there wondering what they're supposed to be doing for years without creating any real I think it's more important just to generate more efficiency within the local departments and things that are required by the Town Code, such as the Open Government Advisory Board. That's required by the Town Code to meet at least once every two weeks and to generate, or two months, excuse me, and to generate a yearly report. The town board has failed to populate that board for the last three years, and it's gone away. We could use it right now to bring more openness to the government, but we don't have that. I was taking a look at the requirements for the new department, and all I see is the same thing. It's very bland, there's a lot of overlap on here, some are too extensive, and it just keeps going on. If you put somebody in office with these requirements on there, they're not going to be able to function since the requirements are very vague, and it's going to be useless.
Thank you, Joe.
Stan Sliva, 266 Cranberne Lane. Let me correct some things for people, since they seem to have forgotten the past. The Facilities Department has, has been talked about since 2016, when I was first town attorney. Who was the supervisor then? Barry Weinstein, a Republican. It's taken a long time because a suggestion was made to change the code, and it hasn't been changed until now. There are, in my opinion, lots of things that should be changed in Chapter 4. This is just a start. Is it a good start? I leave it to the public officials to decide. We elected you, and apparently, people don't like elected representation. They like the rule-by-mob rule. I'm all in favor of changing Chapter 4. I have some suggestions for changing other parts of it, but this is a good start, and it's been talked about since 2016, if not before. And I can't talk about then, maybe Mr. Plunkett can, because I was not in the town attorney's office back then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. Any additional speakers regarding this public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to make, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With the public hearing closed, I will make a motion to adopt the local law amending Chapter 4 of the Town of Amherst. With that, Scrivener's error.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-777 and 2025-702 are going to be tabled until the 30th of September.
Need a motion.
All right. I make a motion to table Resolution 2025-777 until September 30th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then for Resolution 2025-702, I'll make a motion to table that resolution until September 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So seeing we don't have, can I see your?
Some public expression.
Seeing we do not, the rest of it, we will move right to public expression. The first speaker on public.
I don't have to open it.
I know, I'm just getting Joe ready. Our first speaker, we're going to, after we open public expression, is going to be Joe Voitovich. I'll make a motion to open public expression at this time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe Voitovich, 35 B.Cyrus. I'd like to talk again about the Royal Park financing. And the original resolution, it was passed a few years ago, Amherst was going to put in $7.2 million, with the $2.4 million was going to be coming from a, a grant that Damon would get from New York State. The grant was considered a matching grant, where the grantee must pay 75% of the project costs, and then they will receive 25% from the state grant. That means that Damon College was required to put in the 75% of the money, which now Amherst has paid themselves. That disqualifies them from the grant. The grantee must also submit checks issued to contractors directly who completed the work. I've contacted the Town Controller's Office, and they have been paying the contractors themselves. That also would disqualify Damon from getting that grant. Amherst also owns all of the park, and Damon retains no control on the park whatsoever. The grant process requires them to maintain control of that. They should have ownership of the property since the grant has them putting in 100% with no other outside interests being involved with this. The state agencies, though, have been quite elusive in returning floor requests, and only last month gave out the final contract, which was signed in April. Because of this fact, it's getting really hard to dig up this information, but from what I've been seeing so far, is that there's many contract requirements that have been nullified on this, and therefore, this grant money should not have been issued in the first place. And I presume then that Damon probably won't get the money as promised from the state, which means that Amherst will be out the 2.4 million.
Thank you, Joe. The next speaker during public expression will be Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Bill Blake, 147 Fairlawn. I'd like to take a moment and address a topic that has been spoke about many times at this podium and in the, in the press, and that's the, the new Egbertsville Youth Center at 1350 Egbert Road. I have some really, really good info, or news to, to share with you, but I'd just like to take a, a quick look back. From December 16th, the board passed the Resolution 2024-998 to lease the Egbertsville Youth Center for $28,000 a month, or $336,000 a year, little bit over $3 million over 10 years. Well, and I had many discussions with Brian about why we needed this, why it had to be there. We talked about the Egbertsville hose company that Sacred Heart bought. That wasn't an option. 4110 Bailey, the, the former Youth Center, was no longer an option for various reasons. But the property behind 1350 was an option, and one of the main driving forces was its proximity to Echo Park. So what I'm here to tell you today, announce today, is of September 15th, we have a wonderful other option to entertain for the youth center. It's right across the street, less than 200 yards away. It's the former Western New York Catholic Charities building right behind St. Benedict's. It's, I did a complete tour of the building last week. It's handicap accessible. It has a full IT infrastructure already in place, security system, updated heating and air conditioning. There's no asbestos in the building. It has a huge parking lot for cars and buses. It's got green space on the side for parties or picnics or whatever you want. And the best thing of all, right outside the front door, is a brand-new $100,000 playground. So I think it's, it's imperative that this town board take a look at this before moving forward. Here's one picture. I'll submit all the pictures I took inside the building. Pictures are now available on our Amherst Concerned Citizens Facebook page, so you can see them all. I have the name of the person, Marty Card, who is looking forward to hearing from the board to, to take a look at this property. And it would save the, based on quick math, from what I've been told, it would save the, the town taxpayers over $136,000 a year in lease cost alone, and it's already outfitted to, to move into. So I think it's a, a very reasonable thing, and I hope you'll take advantage of it.
Mr. Blake, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next two speakers, Andrew Morganti and Matt Plunkett.
Good evening, Deputy Supervisor Lavin, Councilwoman Berger and Marinucci, and Councilman Zuccala. My name is Andrew Morganti, and I reside in Gettsville. I am speaking tonight as a member of the Amherst Concerned Citizens. And first, Councilwoman Berger, please accept our heartfelt condolences on the loss of your mother. I am directing my questions to Councilwoman Marinucci, as you have consistently shown a willingness to engage with the residents. Regarding the proposed transfer of the Amherst Central Park to Erie County for $1, we have heard we're being asked to trade this multimillion-dollar community asset for North Forest Road, a crumbling road in dire need of repair, repairs that would fall to the Amherst taxpayers. So I ask plainly, are we really giving away a prime parcel of land for $1 a year while assuming the cost of fixing a failing road and footing the bill for both? Now, let's be clear, where exactly is the financial benefit to Amherst? Thank you.
Mr. Plunkett.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. Couple of meetings ago, Mr. Lavin, I mentioned.
Couple of meetings ago, Mr. Lavin, I mentioned your appearance on WBEN Radio where you talked about what a great deal it was for the town to enter into this proposition with the county to give them the golf course for a dollar or Westwood Country Club for a dollar and we'll pay the balance back over the lifetimes of ourselves and our children. And during your performance on the radio, you said that the town had no experience in running golf courses and they would be taking on something they don't know how to do. And as I pointed out to you at the time, that was simply untrue. The town had years and years of experience in managing not one, but three municipal golf courses. And as a matter of fact, I saw Eric Guzdak sitting back there tonight and he knows this because he was intimately involved in some of that stuff in the rec department. So he knows the town managed the golf courses. They were able to do it. They did it effectively. There's no reason why they can't do it again. So there's that. But the thing that struck me after the fact, after I thought about it some more, is you seem to have this concern about taking on stuff that the town doesn't know how to do in that you voted to spend $30 million and burden three generations of Amherst taxpayers with a debt for it to take on a street lighting system. And this town has never managed streetlights in its existence that I'm aware of. Never mind not having done it recently. They've never done it. And given by the constant parade of people coming up here at town board meetings trying to figure out how to get their streetlights to work, they still can't do it. So, you know, don't talk about, oh, we shouldn't take on things we can't do when you burdened us with $30 million of debt to take on something this town had absolutely no experience in. And that's the case. And Councilmember Berger, I'm very sorry for the death of your mother as well. It's one of the tougher things in life to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Bruce Corotkin? Am I pronouncing that incorrectly, Bruce?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bruce Corotkin. My wife, Deborah, and I live at 28 Collins Court in the Gettsville section of Amherst. We've been there 15 years from the beginning, opening of that development. Before that, we lived at 28, 19 Kingsbridge Court, also in Gettsville, for 15 years. So we've been here in this part of Amherst for over 30 years. What I want to just ask the board to do in their review of the proposals for the project, I don't know if it has names that we're allowed to talk about, Starbucks or whoever, that there be some kind of compromise. All we're looking for is peace and quiet and no harm across neighborhoods or across the fields. I think that this project can go forward if it's allowed to be a neighborhood business as opposed to a general business. The neighbors that have come forward about this project are very concerned about the differences between neighborhood business and general business. They want to keep this neighborhood, one that will be conducive for family living. For the people who moved in originally now have had their children and they're now our grandchildren living there. So I'm more concerned about my little kids who are six and eight right now. And we got another little guy that's right over here that's seven or eight as well. That this should, the project is allowed to move forward only if it meets the needs of the community and the neighborhood and that people can get along and work together on classifications or proposed renovations or new construction that will be acceptable to everybody. We've had to live with a lot of noise from the West Hur Lincoln Continental dealership and truck dealership. That wasn't anticipated. So I'd like to see the town board somehow get involved in this and make sure that that doesn't happen again. I worked for the state of New York for some 35 years, developing the alternatives to the West Seneca Developmental Center. In addition to Jackie's family, we mourn the loss of, oh, God. Penny Tepulitz, I'm sorry, a former board member. She was the first developer of a neighborhood or site development program, development projects, a committee from the town of Amherst. I worked closely with her on that. People can come together and find means to compromise and make everything acceptable to everybody rather than have anything bulldozed down their throats. I'm not political. I don't care what party wins. I don't care who the new supervisor is or isn't. I want what's best for our community and our grandchildren. That's all.
Our next speaker is Melissa Finley. Sure. Melissa, it's only three minutes, though.
Understood. I'm Melissa Semaday Finley. I'm representing the neighbors of Collins Court. I did present to the board before, so I won't go through the whole presentation. What I did want to bring up that we didn't bring up last time is just some visuals. A lot of times we look at site plans and it's hard to really understand how close things are and how close proximity they are to residences. So we took this opportunity just to blow up a picture. So this is the site plan that you guys have seen. Sorry. So this is the site plan of the proposed development. That's the impetus for the rezoning. And so you can see that the drive-through is pretty close to the properties. But again, this is a picture. It's hard to really see how close it truly is. This is an aerial view. Google Earth, we measured the distance based on the site plan. This is the proposed drive-through. This is one of the residents' homes. And you can see there's just barely any land between the fence and where that drive-through is going to be. Also, the speaker for the drive-through is right here. You can't tell with the trees, but that's the other residence's backyard. So I think when we're thinking about the betterment of the community, which is what we're supposed to consider when rezoning, I think it's a detriment to the community to have a drive-through literally in people's backyards. Because I think a lot of people say, not in my backyard, and that's kind of a generalized term. This is literally in their backyard. And at this point, the developer doesn't have a clear-cut proposal. We don't know if it's going to be a Starbucks. We don't know if it's going to be a Mighty Taco. We don't know if there's going to even be a tenant at this point. And I think before we would reconsider changing the zoning code applicable to this property, we should at least have a clear-cut proposal and then a traffic study, a noise study, an environmental study. All of those studies should be considered to decide if this truly is to the betterment of the community or to the detriment of the community. And so we would say that the application really isn't even really ready for review. Also, I just wanted to take the opportunity, also blew up. The current zoning designation of the property is neighborhood business. There are so many uses of the neighborhood business that are already permitted under this zoning designation that it just doesn't seem to be a clear reason why we need to make a broader commercial use of the property. It includes the ability to do medical offices, commercial offices, drugstore, food store, advertising agency, home furnishing store, garden stores, ice store, restaurant, training facility, photography studio. There's just a ton of uses that could be profitable uses of this property. We don't want it to sit vacant. We want tax revenue to grow for the community. We don't want to see vacant properties just because that's not good for crime and blight in the community. But we just want the use of the property to fit in with the rest of the residential neighborhood. That's all we're asking. So another thing I think this picture is helpful to show. I know a lot of times the applicant has brought up the existence of the other drive-throughs. So for instance, Rite Aid, which we know currently has closed, but that's Rite Aid right here. And you can see that the drive-through is very far away from other properties. And the drive-through at Rite Aid is only like, you know, a few cars per hour. We're not talking about the traffic volume associated with a big, large restaurant. And the same thing for the bank. That's not in this picture. But again, it's not right next to the properties the way this unprecedented drive-through would be next to this house. Again, I just don't think it's good for our community to encourage that type of commercial development next to residences where kids play, where people want to sit out and enjoy their backyard and just have peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Our next speaker is Kathleen Semaday. Semaday, did I say that right? Semaday.
Good evening. With respect to all of you on the board, you were all elected to represent the people of Amherst and to do what is best for the community. And this is not what is best for our community. We understand the need to increase tax revenue and the benefit that brings to the community. But there are a wide array of businesses that can be used there under the current zoning circumstances Melissa showed. I know that at one point, there was a letter that came out from the prior owner of Nina's saying that he had hoped 30 years ago that there was a drive-through there for him. And I'm like, why would you continue to run a drive-through or run a business without a drive-through if you're not profitable for 30 years? And we know people who know him and he owned three other businesses. And the only reason he decided to get rid of Nina's is because he is retiring. So the use of that letter is, to me, not really correct. So again, we ask that you keep it as a neighborhood business. There's many things you can use there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Semaday.
Hello, my name is Robert Semaday. I live at 33 Collins Court. And I'm against it becoming a general business. I'm more for it to be staying as a neighborhood business so that we can keep it the way it has been. Relive is a beautiful area. There's kids, families. You've got to be careful when you become a general business. Things can happen. I mean, for some reason, it could become an undesirable place for some businesses to land in. So I just want to keep it the same. I'm not against progress. I think it's great to have progress. Like the attorney said, Melissa Semaday said that. You can put all kinds of business. There's really no need to change the zoning. If you ever see the traffic on Millersport, it's amazing. I could tell you that because I run it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Adams. Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Richard Adams, 186 Collins Lane. If you haven't visited Collingwood Estates, it's a beautiful community. A lot of us seniors are residing there. Nina's has been a really good neighbor for us. It was a quiet ice cream shop. It was sad to see it go. But the community is the kind of community that people come from outside the community. They like to park and walk the neighborhood. If you haven't been there, stop over, yeah, take a walk around. It's a beautiful place. We're trying to keep it that way. We've been encroached by, and it turned out okay, but we have been encroached by West Hur behind our, part of our development. That is now a parking lot. Luckily, we did get, there's berms in place and it's a survivable situation. But we've given that, given that, that used to be field and wetland, and that has changed. So again, I'm in favor of the noise. I was going to try to do my best impersonation of what it's like when you drive up to a drive-up, but it's something like this. Can I help you?
It's going to all day, all night. Mr. Adams, that was great. Thank you. Next speaker is Pamela Henderson.
Good evening. I also live in Collins Court. I live at 9 Collins Court, all right? And I'm glad that Richard said we have a wonderful neighborhood. Many of us, this is our second or third home. We moved here to be quiet. We did not move here to hear boom, 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 boom. Okay. But we're not against progress. Too many of us have worked in industry and companies and stuff. So we are for working with anyone that comes there. So if we just say business, we're allowing many, many types of people to come in who might not be amiable to doing the things that that neighborhood can handle or the neighborhood that was there next to us. It's a good family-oriented neighborhood. It's quiet. You raised our taxes. We paid them, okay? And so we want to keep it that way. But we have been willing to talk to, like we talked to West Hur. I mentioned, West Hur said fine. And they actually put up some trees, which if I look out my backyard off my deck, there are like three rows of trees. How tall are they? About eight feet or 10 feet? And so we would want that type of relationship if you in fact did have someone. So we're not against it. But we don't want a bellowing speaker phone and certainly anything that would draw people there. I looked at the numbers of types of businesses. I think a neighborhood business is where we'd like to stay. We know there's progress. We're not trying to stop it. So I'm just speaking for the court and we have many more people who will probably come again. But we want, we don't want to just stay the same, but we want to have what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Shepherd.
Hello, the board. I'm Ann Shepherd. I live at 187 Collins Lane. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. My name is Ann Shepherd. I live at 187 Collins Lane. When people bought houses in there, they were counting on the zoning that was already there. They weren't counting on it all to be changed. And as we said, we'd like, we are all for development because it's better for everybody. We don't want to sit in there vacant. But we really do want to keep the character of the neighborhood as good as it is. Millersport Highway is a very, very busy and major place. But right there where it crosses Collins, it's right in the middle of a lot of, lot of, lot of neighborhoods full of people with kids and who like our peace and quiet. And we're counting on it with the original zoning. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jerry Shad. Jerry?
Hi, Jerry Shad, 199 Meterview. I just wanted to comment on two things. I had thought you were going to take a vote last time on the park project. I gather you haven't. But so when you do, please vote yes because I do think it's a great joint venture. And I've been around long enough to know that around the neighborhood, there used to be signs that said, make it a park, make it a park, make it a park. They're not there right now, but that's what I'd like to see happen. The second thing is on the comments on lights, my lights work. The only one that never worked was the one that some car took out and the town fixed it the next day. So I'm happy with that project because the cost savings to the operation side of this budget of our town has gone down because of that. And those cost savings are paying for this. So that was, in my view, a very good, smart, long-term acquisition. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next speaker is Joe Borges. Did I pronounce that right? Borgesey. I was wrong. Appreciate the time.
I'll get better.
Right, perfect. So I'm just here to advocate, yes, Joseph Borgesey, 20, Kaitlan Court in Gettsville, in a large, great family neighborhood within walking distance, biking distance of Casey Middle and Williamsville North. However, this is more germane to Casey Middle. The corner of Hopkins and Dodge, if you're familiar, very, very busy. A little less now that Rite Aid's not there. But there is no morning crosswalk, crossing guard, I should say. There is an afternoon crossing guard, which I think kind of shows the need is already there and it's been figured out. But I'm really here to comment. I spoke with the, you know, vice principal of the middle school. She said she's heard from others as well. And just looking for that morning crossing guard. Couple of thoughts on that, though. There's already two crossing guards on Dodge near Pine Lake and Avalon. And there's actually two crossing guards within about 12 houses. So my thought is, I know there's an expense with a crossing guard. So a reallocation of these extremely close crossing guards that essentially serve the same U-shaped neighborhood. If we could slide one to this serious intersection of Dodge and Hopkins, I have a... If we could slide one to this serious intersection of Dodge and Hopkins, I have a fourth grader and a fifth grader eager to, you know, one is just starting middle school, one is, is in elementary, and it would just be great. Their morning intermurals start at 7:15, so there's going to be that 7:00 AM time and it's, we all know how rush hour is. So, you know, I know there's a process to evaluation, things like that. If I can be of any assistance to that, I'd be glad to do that. But that's it. So just add a little safety to the, to the neighborhood.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So you said the crossing guard is only there in the afternoon?
There is an afternoon crossing guard, yes.
Has it ever been one in the morning? Or is it, is it like somebody cut a, a bad flu and they're not there this week?
No, no, no. It's like a process. There, there is no morning crossing guard kind of at any time, any, any school year that I've known about. So we do see that afternoon crossing guard, but just has never been a morning crossing guard at that corner.
Can you email us with some of your comments about that? And I'm not sure who makes the decisions on the placement of crossing guards, so we can take it to them and take a look at shifting one or what makes sense.
I appreciate it. And again, however involved I can be in the process, would, would be glad to.
What's going to likely happen is that Chris Schregel, our Amherst Traffic Safety is going to email you. They're going to put it in front of the Traffic Safety Board. They'll give you the next meeting.
I'm not sure that...
They do discuss crossing guards there. They just did with the drive-through. So because I'm at Maple West, so we'll meet up at high school when I get to Williamsville North, but I'm at High Middle. So I just did this with a, a left turn signal. And they'll discuss it there. They'll do traffic counts and then they, they evaluate the need and they make the recommendation on whether or not there should be a crossing guard.
It may not even have to go that far depending upon the situation. It may be able to be remedied even easier.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we need. I, I have a general email chain started. Is there someone specifically I should email or just keep that going? Just kind of a town general mailbox.
Chris Schregel. He's Traffic and Safety for the town, and then he'll get you in the right place.
Thank you. I don't want to take up any more time. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Pearson.
Good evening. I'm Paula Pearson. I live at 34 Collins Court. I am very new to the neighborhood, and this is my first town meeting ever. I grew up in Buffalo, lived in Kenmore, and I just moved into Getzville. And this is quite disturbing. I agree with everybody that has spoken before me. And I also live with my husband and he agrees, and I am, I'm a CPA. And one of my clients is actually my neighbor at 40 Collins Court. So I'm speaking on Cheryl St. Pierre's behalf as well. I've taken, we've all driven through drive-throughs. If you drive through the, the Tim Hortons drive-through on Miller's Port, what's next to them? A parking lot. No homes. This is not something we want in the neighborhood. If it was something else, I wouldn't have moved here. It's very upsetting to all of us that you want to put this 20-car or more drive-through. I mean, if you count the boxes on that picture, that could be 20 cars in line. And Nina's was there at a family-oriented, no drive-through, and that's how it should remain. The gas fumes, the noise, the volume of traffic that a drive-through so close to these homes, it shouldn't even be considered, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Our next speaker is Thomas Frank.
Good evening, Deputy Supervisor Sean Levin, Town Board members and regular meeting attendees. My name is Thomas Frank. I reside at 5403 Main Street in the 1.2 square mile village of Williamsville in the 52 square mile town of Amherst in Erie County, New York. And I want to thank you for your three minutes of public expression to comment on the sewer plant resolution 2025-800. And that's, it has to do with telemetry of Tonawanda Creek and Alloca Creek, the joint funding agreement, the U.S. Geological Survey. But also there's an interconnection with another resolution that you have on the program, which is number 794, the travel request for the New York State Geographic Information Survey Association Conference as far as the, of the town of Amherst, Central Park Greenway. That, and there's, that's the second thing. The third thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is the fact that one region forward, the Comprehensive Climate Action Plan, the public meeting is going to be held tomorrow, Tuesday, September 6th at 5:30 PM at the University of Buffalo South Campus, the Crosby Hall, Room 116. This is the master plan for Erie and Niagara Counties, having to do with the infrastructure, management, and maintenance of the water lines, the sewer lines, and the highway storm sewers. And the third thing I wanted to mention has to do with, I wanted to suggest to this board the Erie County Park name, which was in the Amherst beat for the Westwood Country Club. Name was Willowdale. My suggestion that you pass a resolution for the county to call it the Willie Lilydale Park in the Amherst Central Park Greenway, which interconnects the county parks of the Westwood to the park down by the Niagara Falls Boulevard, where the Alloca Creek intersects with the Tonawanda Creek. And that's what they're doing, the metadata, the, the LiDAR that looks at the hydrogeographic topography of the town. And that's connected to the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project through 2050. Thank you.
Tom, thank you very much.
Yeah, the $450 million that they allocated to Erie and Niagara County.
Thank you, Tom.
And they shut it off at Niagara Falls Boulevard. And it's out in their backyard.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Joe at 59 Golden Pleasant. I'm sorry, I can't make out your last name, Joe.
Oh, there it is. It's hard to pronounce. My name is Joe LaJocke. And I reside at 59 Golden Pleasant Drive in Getzville. And I'm here to speak in favor of the county park in Amherst. I've been an Amherst resident for over 40 years, and I've always felt that the town doesn't have enough green space for families to enjoy. The Westwood property really is an ideal location. It's centrally located in the town, and most residents just drive right by it and can enjoy it. The proposal got bipartisan support in the county legislature, which, as you know, doesn't always happen. It's clear that the financial plan to build the park is, is clear and is, is favorable to town residents, town taxpayers. The county is making an important investment in our town, which doesn't always happen. We shouldn't take that lightly or walk away from it. So to me, the best thing that can happen to this property is to be this county park. I feel it will improve our quality of life in the town without a significant financial burden. It's time to do something with this property that all residents can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So that includes the names written for public expression. If you'd like to speak, if you haven't done so already, please feel free.
Good evening. Chris Rongaski, Mill Street. I've heard, I just want to make some comments on the comments that I've heard this evening in online social media. To say that Westwood, we're selling Westwood an asset of this town for a dollar is not reality. If you really knew this property, you'd understand that this is a huge liability for the town. It's not pristine, like some people want to tell you. It certainly is not. Some comments were to sell the property. Well, that's easier said than done. There's a little problem with you selling the property. What goes on that property? Let's just assume we found a buyer who's willing to pay $10 million, and let's say they wanted to put a subdivision in there. There's a little problem with this whole equation is called remediation. When you start digging down into this ground, especially when you go past 12 inches, you face a different level of remediation. To remediate that property for housing would cost close to a half a billion dollars. That's $500 million. There's no developer in this town that's going to take on that kind of risk. In terms of years of experience the town has, the town has demonstrated clearly that it cannot manage a golf program unbelievably. The political patronage that was going on when the town was running it, it was corrupt and it had criminal activity. And anybody who doesn't believe me, just go to the Buffalo News Archives and you can pull it all up. It was so bad at one point, the town got out of the golf business. It got out of the golf program and turned it over to a private contractor, which was almost the end of the golf program until we finally got a reputable company, True Golf, which is a leader in golf management worldwide, and completely turned the entire golf program around in this town. I want everyone to understand, we used to lose $600,000 a year on the golf program. And now, in a very short period of time, this company has completely turned it around and we're making $300,000 a year. So I would encourage, we can't do it tonight because the supervisor's not here. We need to vote on this. Get this thing moving. This is the time of the year that the town, the county can come in and really start working on this. This is where they can get a lot done and prepare this Westwood for a future park. It's what the residents want. If you, all you have to do is listen to them. I've been up and down fairways many, many times. The town was split between a park and a golf course. This is a compromise. We have a passive park and we have a nine-hole golf course. Furthermore, for people, the cost for the town, if they were even to try it, I've mentioned this in the past, is $10 million to restore an 18-hole golf course. That doesn't include the clubhouse or the parking lots. The clubhouse and the parking lots could run anywhere from $5 to $15 million. Matter of fact, people who've looked at it said it would, we'd be in the best financial interests of the town just to take down that clubhouse. It's that bad, and that would be a real tragedy. So, you know, people who are running on financial...
Respectfully, your time is up. All righty. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
John Trevor, Mount Vernon. Just kind of a follow-up question as far as what Chris was talking about. If that does go through, it asked a question a few meetings ago and got sort of an answer. But I'd like to know, if that does go forward, the exchange, given the, given the power over to the county, is there any provision in the agreement for Amherst to take over North Forest Road? I would like a solid answer on that. Any provision at all, whether it's implied, written, anything? And just another comment. After listening to the people that live on Collins Court, I support those citizens in that it's going to affect their way of life, and I just don't know why this board can't explore any other options before rezoning.
Any additional speakers?
Stan Sliva, 166 Grand Berlin. I'm sitting here and I listen to 16 speakers. I'm saying to myself, have they ever read the rules of order? Because the rules of order specifically state as follows, and this has been the rule since 2019 and not before. 2019, six years ago. The purpose of public expression is to allow the opportunity of the public to formally communicate with the board on any matter involving Amherst. Well, a bunch of people abide by that rule. Two people did not. Wonder why? This is not designed to be a conversation with the board or ask questions to the board. Two people didn't, didn't obey that rule either. Now, I understand. My Felicia Nuns would have beat the hell out of me if I had violated the rules like these people did. I'm sorry about that. That's what I was taught early on, that cheaters don't win, and people who violate the rules are cheaters, in my opinion. We ought to enforce the rules and keep them straight. And that is my comment regarding issues regarding public expression. And I think that we ought to step back and determine why it is that the rules haven't been changed since 2019. I can talk to my, about my own personal experience, but I would violate attorney-client privilege. I can't do that. So we have to ask ourselves, why haven't the rules been changed and should we change them again? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sliva. Any further comments? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to close.
From this board, just a quick question.
Close. Can I close this public expression first?
Yes. But then there's not a question for me to answer.
I'd like to make a motion to close public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. For a moment. No, there is no provision in this agreement to take over North Forest Road. The purchase and sale agreement was published in the August notice and in the public hearing. You can see it in there. I am unaware of any deal. I haven't made any deal for North Forest Road with the transfer, not exchange, for $1 of the Westwood property to Willowdale. And additionally, when a, an owner of property brings a rezoning action, that is not the board bringing the action. The, the property owner is asking us to review it and have this public hearing so that we may discuss it, see what the residents want in that area, and decide accordingly. So it's not our motion, and Ms. Fair, Air Semaday, I know that you know this, but it's not our motion to do so. It is a request by the owner of that property and any other developer that we review here that the planning board reviews, and then we go forward with that vote from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. I'm going to ask our town clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Town Attorney 1. Town Clerk 1 was withdrawn. Building, building maintenance, 1, 2, 3, 4. Controller 1. Contract compliance, 1, 2, 3. Engineering, 1. Highway, 1. Human resources, 1, 2, 3. Planning, 1, 2, 3, 4. Under police, 1 was withdrawn. Senior services, 1. Sewer plant, 16, 1, 2. Youth and recreations, 1, 2, 3, 4. Communications, 1. Was referred to engineering, traffic safety. 2 referred to attorney. 3 referred to attorney. 4 referred to attorney. Under public improvement permits, 1 was consent, 2 was consent, and 3 was consent. Thank you.
All in favor of the consent agenda?
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye. All right. So our last item before a second round of public expression, make a, make a motion to deviate from our regular agenda with a suspension item? I will so motion.
Second. We need to second it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Should we read this then? Go ahead.
All right. This is to the town board from Scott P. Chamberlain, the Chief of Police, dated September 15th, 2025. This is a directive to pay outstanding invoices to SHI International Corporation. Whereas the town of Amherst Police Department used grant funding to purchase public safety dispatch equipment and computer equipment from SHI International Corp. using the P-E-P-P-M contract on July 31st, 2025, August 4th, 2025, August 5th, 2025, and August 19th, 2025. Whereas SHI International Corp., who is the authorized reseller under said P-E-P-P-M contract, fulfilled these orders in a timely manner. Whereas the directive of the Contract Compliance Department, the police department, attempted to enter into a piggyback contract with the distributor of these items, TD Senex, with no success, and therefore the invoices have remained unpaid. And therefore be it resolved that the town board direct the police department and the comptroller's office to pay these invoices from SHI International Corp. that remain outstanding no later than September 30th, 2025, as per the grant guidelines for these And I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to return to our regular agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And we will move on to our second round of public expression. I'd like to make a motion to open our second round of public expression.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chris Rongaski, Mill Street. Once again, to follow up with the expense with respect to anyone trying to... to anyone trying to build a new 18-hole golf course in Westwood. And I've been very critical of the financing, some of the financial things that have gone on in this town the last four years. But this is an opportunity that the town cannot afford to miss. For the county to step up and facilitate the development of this property, you know, it's $9 million and it's going to be a lot more to restore that clubhouse. And hopefully, we can restore that clubhouse. The, you know, we're looking probably long-term, a $20 to $25 million commitment to that property. The people, especially in the area, want that to be a park. The community wants it to be passive and active. The nine-hole golf course will allow that to happen. I would like it to, the name to remain West, be called Westwood Park. Westwood has a lot of history, good and bad in this town, but it's, that's what it should be really called. It should be called Westwood Park because everyone identifies with Westwood. And so I think if there could be any changes, we should continue, maintain the name Westwood, whether it's a park, whatever. I hope, I believe now it will become the park and nine-hole golf facility. And we can move on. And after 20 years of the mess, and there's been a lot of mistakes, it's time to move on. And this is in the best financial interest of the town, in my opinion, by allowing the county to come in and do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other speakers for our second round of public expression? Go ahead.
Stan Sliva, 166 Grand Berlin. I didn't finish my issues regarding the rules. And I want to read the rules because I think it's important to people to know what the rules are. And as presently written, as of 2019, Rule 75 says as follows, remarks shall be addressed to the board as a whole, not to individual members. This is not an indication of being able to grill people. It's meant to express your opinion regarding issues that will arise during the meeting or issues that apply to Amherst as a whole. I think as the Amherst as a whole, we need to obey the rules and we may look at changing them if, if need be. And that's what my, my sole comment is addressed to.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sliva.
Tom?
Thank you for letting me come in. On the, the name of the Westwood Country Club, the golf course, Westwood himself that owned it, that paid to build the, the country club was a pharmacist. And the, the country club was a drug distributing place. And as far as the name, I don't, I don't think you should keep the Westwood name. And what was suggested by the county was the, the Willowdale. Now, the willow is a tree. It's a willow tree. And a dale is a place, is a low-placed valley between hills. And I'm suggesting a much more encouraging title for the Amherst Central Park Greenway as the, and Willie Park Jr. was the guy that put together the park in 1921. And that, that it should be called the Willie Lilydale Park. The Willie Lilydale Amherst Central Park Greenway. All the parks are interconnected. The Island Park, the Glen Park, the Amherst State Park, the, the Elocket Park that goes from Maple down to UB, and the county park that, this is a part of the New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. And this is a strategic geographic area that, there were four wars that were fought over this territory. Erie and Niagara County were a part of Genesee County. And Buffalo was New Amsterdam after the, the British threw the Dutch out. They financed the Revolutionary War, and the Revolutionary War veterans are buried across the street. I don't want to get into Winfield Scott, but there's a history here that goes back to the indigenous, as far as the Indian trails. And that's as far as the, the cultural history, it's tied into the climate. There were hunter food gatherers. And as far as what's going on, that this is going to be connected to the education system as far as the, the school districts, the Greenway, the interconnection of the parks. Thank you.
Tom, thank you.
Hi, Mary Dormer, Getzville, New York. I think the opinion that we need is that of the residents, not from people from the fairway. Not from people that, you know, we've known forever at the golf course that it previously was. We need the, we need to know the opinion of the residents of Amherst. And we need to remember that Amherst Central Park, that us taxpayers have paid over a total of $20 million for this. So it is very much important that we do not just give this away for $1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. Res election, yeah, right, Resolution 2025-789, I guess it is, the one that the board adopted a bit ago, with respect to, I presume it's Holcomb Quarry's purchase order. I read through that and it sounds to me like this must have been some products that went up the bid and, and the different parts of the contract were awarded to different vendors. And somehow or another, it looks like this outfit sent the town a product for which they were not the low bidder because the memo from the highway superintendent says that they were not awarded, that, that part of the bid was not awarded to them. And now they're billing the town for their full price and saying they won't do business with the town unless the town pays. I don't think the town ought to do that. They sent it, they, they knew they weren't awarded the bid, assuming things went through the normal bidding process. They knew they weren't awarded the bid for that part of it. If they sent it along, I wouldn't pay it and say, "Thank you very much." But, you know, a reasonable compromise might be to offer them whatever the successful bid price was for that product and say, "Look, we both made mistakes here. Let's compromise this thing and we'll pay you what the successful bid price was, but not more than that." That's just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett.
Dave Howard, 194 Roycroft Boulevard. Just a couple of quick thoughts on the, the town park. You know, I, I agree that we need to move forward. The only thing I'm still concerned with is the design of the park with the golf course on one side and a park with a walking path so close to the golf course. And really, no protection for the people that are going to be in the park. I mean, I just think people need to look at that and say, what kind of, what kind of danger is there as those golf balls are going to be spewed over into that park? Not seeing a lot of them. Only takes one, though. So I just really take a good look at that and see, is it in our best interest to have it designed that way or configured a little different? Just a couple of things I was thinking about coming to these meetings over the, over the last year, year and a half. And that's frustrating to me, I guess, is, this is going to be crazy, but it's the speed limit of our town streets. It's set at 30. I'm think, I've been to a lot of cities where it's 25. Just something to think about. Everybody's always concerned that the traffic's going too fast, too fast, too fast. Just maybe all 30 mile an hour roads should be knocked down to 25. Just a thought. There's that. The other thing is school, school zones. Could we standardize the school zones time-wise? You go down Main Street, there's like five different school zones, and they're all different times, start-stop, all day long, half-day long. It's just, it's just crazy. I mean, just, hey, it's either all day for every school, or it's the morning, break, and then the afternoon. It'd just be much easier. Just, I'm getting old. It's like looking at the signs, how fast can I go? What am I doing? I got the 10 mile an hour under. That again, I mean, if, if it's good enough for high school students to be 25, how come elementary school can be 35? I mean, I know it's 10 under the speed limit. That's how you got them set. But it seems kind of crazy that on Main Street, we're good at 25 because that's what it needs to be because it's 35, 20. But you go down Sweet Home, that's a 45 and it's 35 out there. I mean, I don't know. Just something to think about, standardizing. And the last thing, I know my, my streetlight, my streetlight. I just thought it would be a good test of the system to try and look at that pole number five that sits in the back of hole 15 on the golf course that's lighting up a tree. It's, it's not a town light. Nice. Okay. So, all right. Who pays, I guess who pays the electricity for that light? I'm not, wait a minute, I can't ask that question. But just, I guess that, that'll be my next email.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other speakers for the second round of public expression? Okay, seeing none, we're going to make a motion to close public expression?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.